This meeting of August 13th, 2012, the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Ms. Lucas, roll call please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Byteam?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strillo?
Present.
We welcome all those who have gathered here this evening and those who are watching on the channel. We're grateful that you can join us. We will now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Otto?
Otto, you want to get it started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 16th and the superintendent's search meeting on August 7th, 2012, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 16th and the superintendent's search meeting on August 7th, 2012, as submitted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order.
Oh, sorry.
Right there. Sorry.
We have a red carpet recognition at this time and Acting Superintendent Stan Rhengans will approach the podium.
We have a red carpet recognition tonight. It's one of those sort of bittersweet experiences that we have sometimes this time of year where we have a long-term employee who is moving towards retiring from the school district, but to a second career, working a little more closely with students. So I'd like to ask Lynn Helmke, our Special Education Director, to come to the podium. Lynn, as you know, has been with the district for 15 years as the Director of Special Education. If those of you who know Lynn or have been in the district, you understand how complex that organization is, how large it is. Our special education services are probably second to none in the state. We offer really well-rounded education to all of our students, particularly those with special needs, and Lynn has been instrumental in building that department. Special Ed, as she reminds me all the time, is only a little over 30 years old and it's really just being built as we speak. And so for 15 of those years, Lynn has directed the efforts of the school district. And so Lynn is definitely one of those experienced, well-thought people that we will miss greatly next year when she was on to her second career, working a little closer with kids. So congratulations Lynn.
Thank you, Steve.
I don't know if you want to say a few words?
Oh, we have to stand together. You don't get out.
You've got to get in the red carpet.
Yes, we have a person, don't we? We are. Thanks. It's been a really good 15 years, really 20 some years with the school district, and I feel very honored. Like Stan said, Special Ed is only 37 years old the way we know it. The legislation was 1975. And when you think of world history and American history, we're just beginning the journey. That's not very long when you think of that in relationship to history. It's long for the parents that have children with disabilities, though. It needs to move faster, but it's where we're on a journey. And I've been privileged to be Director of Special Ed for 15 years here for this school district. And I'm the first Director of Special Ed for this district. Before that, Keystone ran Special Ed programs. I don't know if you're aware of that. But I inherited a fine program. Joe Hendrickson is the one that started that in 1975. Then Jan Tetterton was the next person that was at the helm. And then Harold Blatt, which many of you would remember, Harold Blatt, and myself. So I have always say that I was the benefactor of a very fine program when I inherited it and I could move it on. And I'm sure the next director for you is going to do the same thing, take it on with the mission that all children deserve, a free and appropriate public education, and keep that mission. But this community has been committed to that. This is amazing community. And I wouldn't have been able to leave if it hadn't lead, if it hadn't been for this community, if it hadn't been for the outstanding teachers in this district and outstanding administrators, because one person doesn't do this. It is where it's a team that makes its work. So thank you so much for the honor of being your Director. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, if I could just add a note to what has already been said. We moved to Dubuque about 10 years ago, my family and I. And one of the major reasons we decided to move here was that we had children with special needs and we were looking for the right environment for them. And it was largely due to your reception of us and your willingness to understand what our kids needed that really led to us choosing this community. So I just want to add a personal note of thanks for all that you did, not only for my family, but for all the families of Dubuque. Truly, it's been an honor to know you. We wish you all the best in your next endeavor and thank you so much for being a part of Dubuque Community Schools.
Thank you.
We now have an opportunity for board salutes. And Otto Kruger, I believe you have a salute this evening.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank Stacey Becker and Byron Cooper for the article in today's TH. We have a young student, Roosevelt, and her name is Lexis Teremas. And she understands the definition of character and helping those in need. And what she's done, she's asked me for school supplies to give to the needy kids as her birthday present. And, well, Lexi, you know, you have a very kind heart and I wanted to thank you for that. As a person who does mentoring in the school district, I know the needs that are out there and there are very needy children out there. So Lexis, thank you very much and I hope you have a great school year.
Thank you. Any other recognitions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I've been informed by our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services that approximately 1,400 of our students this year participate in summer reading programs with the Dubuque County State Library. That represents about 30% of our K through, you know, our elementary kids, which is a great accomplishment. And it's great to know that we have successful programs that are helping kids all through the summer months and know that we're doing all we can to help keep kids engaged during the summer when school's not actually in session. So a congratulation to the kids and the people at the library and the people in the school district that make that program happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I also wanted just to take a moment and acknowledge that today was a kind of a benchmark. We had our new teachers come into the forum for their first official day, if you will, and some 90 teachers who are new to the district this year. And I wanted to, on behalf of the board, welcome you to our district and wish you all the best and know it'll do us proud. And I want to also acknowledge all the work that's been done the last few months. You know, it used to be in the old days that summer meant time off. I don't think that construct exists much anymore for teachers. And I know many of them have been working hard preparing their classrooms, preparing lessons. And so I didn't want to miss an opportunity to thank and congratulate all of those who prepared for the new school year, from the executive team down to administrators at the building level, to everyone who supports our teachers and our kids. The school board is very aware of your efforts and we want to congratulate you and wish you a wonderful and successful new year.
Craig, if I could just piggyback on that a little bit. We had, as you mentioned, 90-plus new teachers, nurses and counselors here today. There were a wide range of folks from brand-new, about half of them are brand-new teachers, the other half coming from a variety of backgrounds. They were from two to 15 years of experience from a number of states. And as HR Director, I'll give you an update to that hiring later. But today, just wanted to thank Chrissy Johnson, who was brought on board just last week and played a significant role in the new teachers workshop today and will tomorrow, as well as David Olson and Nancy Bradley, Tammy Dear, Lynn Devaney and many other people who were working hard. One of the things that we're proud of as a district is that if you track attrition of new teachers, which is an important factor for us, our attrition rate is much lower than the state and the national average. And it's because our new teachers are part of an excellent mentoring program that's been well-established over the years. But it's also because of, I think, the support that they feel district-wide, from the school board down to the parents of the students. So that's one of the things that really makes, sets our district apart and raises the bar educationally for our kids. So we're excited to have them.
Great. Mr. Strillo, you want to?
Yeah, now I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Those wishing to address the board can do so at this time.
If the vote.
All those in favor of open forum, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, could anyone like to address the board?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular sessions.
Second.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we're back in regular session. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there anyone who'd like to remove anything from the consent agenda at this time? It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And just for the sake of our viewers, the consent agenda includes reports from various committee meetings, treasurer's reports, secretary's report, as well as other committee meetings that have been taken place since our last board meeting. Thank you. Bless you. Next on our agenda, we have a report on support services and we'll turn the time over to Mike Donahue.
We have half a dozen things to take action on and discuss. But first, I would move that the Board of Education reject all bids for the purchase of one dump truck with auxiliary lighting, snowplow and tailgate spreader, since all the bids exceeded the budgeted amount.
Second.
Discussion? Any additional information needed on that, Mike?
No, I think we'll take another run at it when we need it.
Okay. It's been moved in second and the Board of Education reject all bids for the purchase of one dump truck with auxiliary lighting, snowplow and tailgate spreader, since all bids exceeded the budgeted amount. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
I would move that the Board of Education approve the revised reimbursement agreement with Clark University for college-level specifications at Dalzell Field in the amount of $52,424.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just point out that, excuse me, that the revision simply spells out that if there are changes in the future, that not only is the district in approval of that, but obviously that the other party to that agreement would also, we would require their approval as well.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve the revised reimbursement agreement with Clark University for college-level specifications at Dalzell Field in the amount of $52,424. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the district and the city of Dubuque for school resource officers as submitted in the amount of $132,957.50.
Second.
Any additional information?
No, a continuation of, obviously, a relationship with the city of Dubuque. This is, I believe it's four, four resource officers in our various facilities.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve the agreement between the district and the city of Dubuque for school resource officers as submitted in the amount of $132,957.50. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Geezy Roofing Company on the Transportation Department Facility Roof Improvements Project in the total deduct amount of $1,000.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just say we welcome all deducts as far as change orders.
Is there more of these coming?
No, deduct is too small or too big.
Yeah, we will keep looking.
It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Geezy Roofing Company on the Transportation Department Facility Roof Improvements Project in the total deduct amount of $1,000 being paid from insurance proceeds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing, Inc. on the Senior High School Small Gym and Corridor Roofing and Insulation Replacement Project in the amount of $6,602.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's some minor changes to the roof and this bill would let it discuss any further, but it's pretty minor adjustments to the pitch to match the parapet and make sure that the insulation's at the required depth.
Any questions from anyone? It's been moved in second and the Board of Education approve Change Order Number One to Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing Incorporated on the Senior High School Small Gym and Corridor Roof and Insulation Replacement Project in the amount of $6,602. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
On the last item, I would move that the Board of Education authorize the Board President to sign the following resolution, Resolution Approving the Adopting of the Dubuque County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and to request approval of the plan at the federal level. Whereas the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 was signed into law October 30th of 2000, placing new emphasis on state and local mitigation planning for natural hazards and requiring communities to adopt a hazard mitigation action plan to be eligible for pre-disaster and post-disaster federal funding for mitigation purposes. And whereas a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan was prepared by Dubuque County with assistance from East Central Intergovernmental Association of Dubuque, Iowa, which includes the Dubuque Community School District. Whereas the purpose of the mitigation plan was to lessen the effects of disasters by increasing the disaster resistance of the county and participating jurisdictions located within the planning boundary by identifying the hazards that affect the county and prioritize mitigation strategies to reduce potential loss of life and property damage from those hazards. And whereas FEMA regulations require documentation that the plan has been formally adopted by the governing body of the Dubuque Community School District in the form of a resolution to further request and approval of the plan at the federal level. And now therefore, the governing body of the Dubuque Community School District does hereby, or herewith, adopt the Dubuque County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan in its entirety and request approval of the plan at the federal level.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Do we need any additional explanation? Kevin?
The purpose of this is in order for us to directly apply for FEMA grants. Previously, we would have gone through another entity in order to get those dollars. This is a path that allows us to directly apply for FEMA dollars when, in a construction project, for example, if we build a safe room or things like that, apply for federal dollars. This is our way to go directly to them.
Anything else? It's been moved in second and the Board of Education authorize the Board President to sign the following resolution, Resolution Approving the Adopting of the Dubuque County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and Request Approval of Plan at the Federal Level as Read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I was opposed to you reading the whole thing.
Again.
Okay, so you could have took.
It passes. Thank you. Next, we have the Educational Programs Committee Report. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Educational Programs Committee was scheduled to meet last Tuesday, but with the superintendent review process, that meeting was put back. And then with another meeting conflict with some of our staff, our meeting has been, for educational programs, has been put back, to my understanding, is to Tuesday, August 28th. So we're out a couple more weeks on that. Some of the topics that I think we're looking at, looking forward to hearing at the next meeting, hearing some information from staff about the contracted services that the district purchases from outside vendors, how those services, what those services are, how we pay for them, what the cost is. We should be getting some information about the new enrollment numbers for starting the school year. Usually that information comes about this time. I'm sure staff is working on putting those final numbers together as far as numbers of students per building. Some of, we're open to anything that people want to hear about, so if anybody has ideas for educational programs or wants us to look at things, we'd be glad to take those ideas up. There was one other thing on the agenda that I can't recall, but.
Activity programs.
There you go. Activity programs. One other thing that I wanted to mention to the board and the staff, I was looking at a website for a school district, an Iowa school district, and became something, became aware of something called a Pearl Levy. A Pearl Levy is a public education recreation levy. It's limited to, I think, .135 of a mil, which is, you know, we tax about 15, 16 mils. So it's a relatively small levy, but this district received about $500,000 from their Pearl Levy. It was a similar district to ours. They also ran all their fee-for-service type of programs through this community education branch of their school district. These fee-for-services programs included things like wraparound care at every one of their elementary schools for daycare services. It also included preschool services, which are pretty big dollar items. But then they had a fairly substantial fee-for-service-based programs for music lessons, athletic types of events, things, a summer program for kids in the kitchen. So there was a whole range of community educational programs that were wrapped into this community education arm of the school district. Some of them were fee-for-services, some of them were through the Pearl Levy, some of them were, funds were provided by their education foundation for the district. And one of the other things that they had with that, along with the fee-for-service-based program or model that they had, they had a scholarship program for people to run free and reduce, to get reductions in fees for some of those things like music lessons that various people would need. So I thought it was an interesting concept. I'd be interested in hearing more about a Pearl Levy. I don't believe we've ever had one in the Dubuque Community School District. The levy would take a vote, vote from the public, but it's, we reduced our property taxes by about $4.5 million this last year on our levy reduction. The Pearl Levy would generate about $500,000 for those types of educational, community education programs. So that was something I've been interested in and something I knew that I found out and something that I thought I'd pass along to the board and the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We have a Policy Strategy Committee Report on Ms. Ryan.
We're supposed to meet right after Ed programs, so we'll meet on the 28th as well. We're doing programs and, I'm sorry, policies. And we'll also be discussing and coming to a recommendation to bring back at the next meeting on advertising and donations at that committee meeting on the 28th, if that still stands on the 28th.
All right. I need to apologize to our board members here. I had originally requested that we include a Dalzell committee report out for this particular meeting and not realizing that we had not resolved or the committee had not completed their work in making a recommendation to the board. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, that recommendation will come together and at our next board meeting, they'll be prepared to come forward with a recommendation, as well as an update on the Dalzell project. So there is no report for this particular meeting, but it will be, if you will, shelved until that committee can meet again and then a new report can be given at the September board meeting. Next, new business. We have an opportunity to hear from our new communications director, Mike Siz, and so invite Mike to come forward and give us an update on his activities since he joined us.
Thank you for a few minutes to chat with you today. If you'll recall, back in late April, when I joined you at the table and you officially approved this new position, I said that I was really excited for the opportunities that were ahead and that I believed that there were great opportunities that were there. And I'm happy to tell you now, just over two months in, that that statement stands true. And I believe there are great opportunities for the district moving forward as we look toward enhancing communication. And I thought it would just take a few minutes to bring you up to date with a little recap of the past two months and then hopefully a look at where I see the priorities as we look to moving forward. First of all, as Stan can attest, on my first day in the office, as we walked around the administration building and I was able to be introduced to the wonderful folks who work here, I often heard, "Oh, great, we have something for you." And, "Great, we have something for you." And so at the beginning of Hour One, at the end of Hour One, had a great list, already started, of areas that people were ready for help tackling. What I have certainly found to be true in the short time that I've been with the district has been the level of candid feedback that has been provided by administrators and staff across the district, which is probably the most refreshing thing as we look forward to really tackling the challenges that exist. As we look back at the first few months, really where much of my time has been spent has been analyzing the current state of communications within the district. I've been meeting with individuals both in the district and out of the district, from building principals to my colleagues in the cabinet, to members of the media, to really get perspective of how has the process worked in the past and what are the goods and the bads that go with that. At my first district leadership meeting, which as you know includes the principals, assistant principals and various administrators from across the district, I started off by just asking the very direct question, "What do we do well in communicating to people and where do we need to do better?" And the level of candid feedback that I received from that very first week has proven to be invaluable moving forward. It set the tone with a request for immediate feedback from that group. And really, what I heard loud and clear at the first meeting was that internal communication was a concern from that group. And while we know that external communication is certainly a critical aspect for the district, one very important place for us to start is to look at the 1,700 employees of the school district as our extended outreach into our community, that they are the front line and they can be the great ambassadors of our message into the public. And so in these early months, have spent some attention to really being proactive about communicating with the district employees and looking at that as a pass-through to share the great message of the school districts. A couple of immediate changes, kind of philosophically, that I tried to start with right away. One is the philosophy that nothing is sacred and that it's important for us to question what we've always done and what can we do better with no blame and no strings attached, but let's just really look directly at what's working and what's not. So I've really tried to say, how can we look objectively and say, where's the good and where's the bad? The second has been gathering feedback. As I said at the first district leadership meeting, I started a very short exercise called five-minute feedback. And it was a five-question written survey that invited people to leave their name or not, if they wanted feedback or not, they could let me know that, but to really give some candid feedback of how we're doing well and how we aren't. Many people left their names on the bottom and asked for phone calls, and I had great conversations after that and provided a great list of things that we could address short term. And then the final thing is being proactive in communicating. What I learned very quickly was that in many cases, the district has been reactive in its communication. And how can we look at ways to be proactive and helping other people think in that proactive way, which is a change of thinking if it's something that you're not used to. That also goes down into really looking at how every detail communicates something, that it's not about one silver bullet answer to how we communicate, but it's about the hundreds of little things that connect together to tell the district story. At the end of this month, you'll see that this wall behind you will be painted a different color. And that seems like a silly little thing, but the way that will reproduce on film, the feeling that it will give in the room, is something that communicates something about the school district. And so it's looking at all of these little pieces and how they fit together to reach the long-term strategy and not saying there's one silver bullet that we can snap our fingers and change the world.
Will that help Mike look better?
What color? This color, cool.
Because I don't like yellow or green. I don't know. I mean, we haven't debated this as a board yet. I think this is something we.
Very neutral brown. You can't go wrong with that. And then I wanted to just tell you about some specific actionable items that we've got immediately. And first and foremost has been, I've really taken an effort to be a presence in the district and to be out talking to people, to getting a sense on the ground. If you are going to tell the story about the district, it's important to get involved in the day-to-day operations of the district. And so I've talked to many building administrators and as the days and weeks go on, we begin the school year, look forward to getting out to each building to really see what happens on the ground in those buildings. What we heard was that many times after board meetings, members of the staff felt as though they didn't know what would happen until they read about it in the newspaper in the next morning. So since my very first meeting, after each meeting, we now send an update to district leadership and the forum staff that gives them a recap of all the action items from the board meetings. Again, it sounds like a small thing, but the feedback we've received on that simple communication has paid dividends in people's, and people being, feeling as though they're being well communicated with.
Mike, now that you're seeking feedback, but I will tell you, I've had several people comment about that and they really do like that a lot.
It's been a very positive step. being well communicated with.
Mike, now that you're seeking feedback, but I will tell you, I've had several people comment about that, and they, they really do like that a lot.
It's been a very positive step. We've also began to use my office as a central point of contact for the media, and are encouraging folks to use that as a resource. And that's not for the sake of controlling anything. What it's, what it helps do is connect the correct people together in the least amount of time. And so how can I be a conduit to reaching the members of the media, both when the media are requesting information from the district to be able to track down the right person, and on the flip side, to help the folks in the district who wish to get the word out there, to be able to connect in the most appropriate way, and looking at using that as a central point of contact. Lead 21 is just one example of, of work where Wanda, she got ready to launch Lead 21, came in and was able to say, "I really would like to get the word about this. How can we be strategic about it?" So in addition to our media outreach, we've helped develop a letter to go to parents as we begin the year that outlines the program, and creating a video program about the changes in Lead 21. So that's been a very positive step, and just one example of how we're trying to be proactive about what we're communicating. Now, as we look toward what's ahead, that's the first few months, I think that there are really three areas that, that most of the effort will be focused on as we look toward the foreseeable future. And one is simply building systems. We talked about this at the first meeting that I joined you at, but once school really gets into session, and we can get a sense of the flow for the school year, to start to develop some specific protocol for how various things happen. Right now, there's no system for what happens when the media contacts, contacts us for information. What happens when you need to update the website? How do you communicate something district-wide? How do you publicize an event? There are no specific protocols in place, and so it's been a very decentralized way of working in the past. So what we'll be doing right away is to develop some initial protocol, and help people understand the best way to accomplish those tasks, rather than having it done in multiple different ways. We'll be providing media training to key administrators, who are often put in the spotlight, or, or talking about initiatives in their schools, and have really had no training in, in, in doing that. So we'll be looking at a media training workshop, and again, continuing to encourage proactive communication, instead of just being reactive about it. Second is the website and our visual identity. With your consent agenda tonight, you approve the addition of the district's first full-time web and print designer. I'm very excited to have this as a new member of our team. The person is Tricia Pitts, who is joining us from Clark University, and was the Director of Creative Services there, overseeing all print and web design initiatives for the university. And Tricia brings to us the experience in working with a website and a web presence that is as complex as the district's, which is certainly something that is difficult to find. Right now, the district's website has somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,700 web pages, and to be able to organize those pages and understand how to build an infrastructure around that is a unique skill, given many websites don't come anywhere close to that level of magnitude. So the first step will be, the first task that we'll work on, will be to make some bridge changes in the current website, to increase it, increase its usability in the short term, to at least get some consistent ability to navigate for our various audiences. At the same time, we will start the process of really drilling down from an architecture level, to the very start, building all the way from the ground up. So we'll be doing these bridge pieces, and in the meantime, we'll be looking to start from the ground up, and rebuild the infrastructure in a way that makes it usable for all the audiences we serve. And that's a lengthy process, and a difficult one when you have that many pages. But we'll be stepping back, and then looking toward moving into a brand-new district website as we move forward.
Have you thought about, or is this part of the process as far as like building templates up for individual schools, you know, the individual schools that could potentially, you know, build up into the district?
Absolutely. And what we've talked about right now is to start with the, at the district level, with the district site, and then look at how can Tricia be a resource to the technology coaches. In, in many buildings, it's the technology coach, and in a few buildings, there are some other folks who update the school sites. But how do we provide the buildings once we move through the district site with a consistent infrastructure that they can use? Right now, all of those sites are updated in different ways, with different software, with different people, and so to build some level of consistency across the board, so that we can also give some support to those folks. Right now, if they have a question, it's very difficult to answer because everyone's doing it differently.
From a brand and look and feel, that would make some sense.
Well, you know, I would think from a safety perspective, I assume that part of this is networking these in such a way that if there's a massive notification that's necessary, it can probably link to all of the, of the sites at once, and not have to go through some laborious pathway to get out.
Right. And so we'll be looking at trying to streamline that entire process. The other piece that goes with Matt's comment, is to really look at the visual identity of the district, and how can we do a review of where we are now, and how do we continue to add a level of consistency across our visual identity that doesn't currently exist? Again, it's very decentralized. There are many places with different logos, and different things happening, and a number of logos that are used or aren't used, and how do we do an inventory of what those things are, and then really hone it in so that we have a central district look that we can then build off of. And again, Tricia will bring great experience in that, having gone through multiple visual identity campaigns. Mike?
I suspect I'm stating the obvious, but I think sometimes too, an aspect to make sure we build in our processes, the user perspective, because a lot of times, we get, we get enamored with how we tell the story, and how it all filters down, and we forget that there's stakeholders out there, particularly parents and the community at large, that have to navigate that. And I know I've heard many, and experienced it myself, that, that can be very frustrating, so I, I would suspect our, your process includes a, a means of gathering input from them.
It's as if you're reading my notes.
Well, I am. They're right here.
But actually, that's a great point, and, and I, I would say one, a couple of things about the website in general. One is that we want to turn it into two things. One is a place where we can tell the district story, and that we can incorporate different components that were not currently multimedia, and social media, and other things to incorporate, to tell a great story of the site. The other is to make it a usable, functional resource for the people who have to use it every day, and to make it as easy as it can be for the parents, for the staff who rely on it daily, and really looking from a user perspective, how do we do that? And so one of the things we'll be looking at is how do we keep in line with best practices on the web, as well as doing research of other K-12 sites, to see where people have had success, and, and making changes that make sense, rather than just being kind of willy-nilly changes.
Just, just a personal thing. We got three-quarters of a million dollars tied up in signage all over the city, that right now, in unison all says, "Have a nice summer." You know, signs back in the day were great. Today, we have signs, they're called, it's called a website. And just as we go forward, you know, rather than invest in bigger and better signs, it makes a lot of sense to have reasonable signage, and information, understand that information should be delivered on our websites.
Which is actually a good segue into Part Three, which is to talk about video production for our minute. And I say it's a good segue because of the way that we're going to be approaching video production in the future, which is somewhat differently than we have in the past. As you know, we've partnered with Loris College Productions to provide our, our video production. They started working with us officially on July 1st, but have been really working for us many months, many months back, and really, we're viewing that group as an extension of our communication staff. I have weekly meetings with them, and they are very present in our district, and we actually have two full-time producers, Felicia Carner and Aaron Horst, who are actually here tonight, as well as the extended resources of Loris College Productions, with Craig Shaper and Ted Rosine, who are kind of working from an off-site level, and are here oftentimes as well. But part of the strategy difference there is, one, we'll beginning, we will begin to develop video content that is strategically addressing the communication issues that people need to know about. And then we'll be developing supplemental programming and student produce programming around that. So the key will be, what are the issues that we need to share, and how do we share them, as opposed to just producing programming, kind of based on topics, but we'll be outlining topics. We've already started to have strategy meetings for what those topics will be. The second point, which goes to your statement, Tom, is to really look at how the web can be an increased vehicle for sharing that content. That it used to be that the access channel was the main delivery method for that video, and with the web now, that's not always the case. So we know that there's a certain audience who will view our programming on the channel, but we also know that there are opportunities now with social media and our website, to make that front and center, and use that opportunity to share the message in a dynamic way that doesn't involve the channel. So they go hand-in-hand with each other, but how do we tie those pieces together, and make the web more robust? There's a certain number of people in our area who don't have access to the channel, to be able to watch the programming, but we can have them access that right on the web.
That was exactly the point I was going to raise, was one of the things we, I think several is kind of excited about, is that right now, if you, if you have DISH, you don't have access to the channel. And so by, by streaming it on the web, how, how far away are we from making, turning that?
Well, and the question of streaming is one thing, but we will also be taking individual programs and positioning them on, in areas of the site that we will be able to share them more widely. And so I think that's a, that's a shorter-term project. We'll look at some bridge things to do before we launch a new site, as to how we can incorporate video now more effectively than we currently are on the website. And just a couple of examples of things that the Loris folks have worked on for us, one is a great video about AIW Authentic Inquiry, and they did a great video with, working with Lynn and her team about that, and they're currently producing a program about Lead 21, the new reading curriculum, and also a series of public service announcements to increase awareness of stop arms on school buses. As you may know, there's increased legislation now to increase the penalties for stop-arm violations. We had 99 violations in our district last year alone, and so looking at a beginning of the school time to raise some awareness of paying attention to those stop arms on buses. The other thing that I think is really important to mention, is that we're benefiting from Loris's relationship with the way a cable access channel works, and the network and connections that come with that. They're very tied to the current state of, to the community access, as well as working with the City Cable Commission and MediaCom, and have already, in their few months with us, secured $44,000 in grant funding through the City Cable Commission, which is a pass-through organization of funding that comes from MediaCom, to revamp the production space that we have here at the district, which is very outdated equipment, and will be creating a new production space upstairs, that will put in all-new equipment. That's totally being funded through the Cable Commission. And are already looking at Phase Two of that project for what resources might be available to update the control room that runs these meetings, and runs our live events. So there is possibly additional funding there, and they'll be helping us connect those dots and, and work on our behalf to increase funding. Also, they are very invested in helping prepare students to do student-produced work, and plan to be in the schools, working with our middle school students, and our high school students, to give them the tools and the knowledge that they need to be able to produce video programs that we can then turn around and highlight on the channel. So all in all, it's been a wonderful relationship till this point. I expect that it will continue to be that way, and really look at them as a, a critical piece of the extension of the work that we're able to do in telling the story. And with that, that's really a broad overview of where we're headed and where we've been. I'll share with you one stat to leave you with, that I, was very reassuring, as we looked at our, our progress up to this point, and we had a district leadership meeting last week, and again, I followed it up with a Five Minute Feedback Survey. And the last question said, "Since our last district leadership meeting, you feel like you've been better communicated with, you've been communicated with the same, or you feel like communication has gotten worse?" And 90% of the folks in that room said they feel better communicated with today than they did two months ago. And the remainder of that group said that they felt the same, and no one felt less. And I think that's a good testament to the steps that we're taking forward, and as I said, it will be incremental steps. But up to this point, I've been very pleased with where we're headed, and again, thankful to you and to the administration and the staff of the district, who are all very willing to embrace change, and look at new directions and where we're headed. And with that, I would answer any other questions you have.
Questions?
I guess I would have more of a comment than a question, Mike, and I guess it stems from a conversation I had with a parent about school lunches, and how do we improve school lunches? And there's two ways to improve what people think about school lunches. One is to make them better. Two is to make them think that what we're already doing is better than what they perceive it to be. And I think there's a lot of things in our district that we do, that we have tremendous success stories, that aren't perceived at the high level that these programs actually are. We have tremendous achievement with, with our kids. We have, we have people doing tremendous things at a number of venues. We have tremendous special education programs. And I think part of, you know, as we strive to make all of our programs better, I mean, that's one thing that goes on, you know, that we kind of try to help drive and focus on continuous improvement, but the other part of that is trying to help people realize the programs we already do are very high-quality. We've got a lot of tremendous stories to tell, and I'm really excited to hear, I'm excited you're here, I'm excited to get some of your programs going, and I look forward to seeing a lot of the great things that are going to come over the next several years. So, thank you.
A fun side note, George, is that we are actually working on a program now about the revisions in school lunches, and, and the federal, the federal changes that have happened in that area, and we just had a meeting about it today. So we'll be looking to, again, communicate the changes that are happening, and help explain it to the families we serve in a way that, that makes sense to them, and explains what's happening, rather than just saying, "Oh, something changed." Well, there are federal guidelines that are making things change, and how can we work to communicate that message, and, and show what we're doing on the district's behalf?
Don't, don't tinker with the pizza. I mean, I think we got that right where we needed to be.
I think that's a question for the feds, Tom.
Any other comments or, or questions? If anybody had told me that you've been in the job for two months after that list, I, I would be incredulous. It really looks like you've got a handle on this. I'm glad that we had this opportunity. I wouldn't have picked on you for two months, but I know that, you know, we made a fairly significant investment in this position, and, and in you, frankly, and, and we wanted to get a sense of how things were moving at this stage. And we hope that there are opportunities throughout the year where we can have you come in and share, and give us a... One thing I would ask, is you mentioned several video programs and things that are, either have been done or in the works, and, and maybe it's just me, I'm not aware of where to know where those things are posted, and how to get access to them. I think the board needs to be kept right in the loop on when those things are happening, and, and so that we can view them, and be a part of them, and, and let other people know about them. So thank you, Mike, very, very much for a very fine presentation.
Thank you.
And I guess I could just jump in there for a minute, and would agree that it's hard to believe that Mike's been here for, for two months. It seems like it's far beyond that, and literally, he did have a list of duties after the first hour he was here. And he's accomplished most of them to this point. And I think the most telling piece is that 90% of our administrative team feels better communicated in, with, in the past two months, and that's certainly our, one of our focuses, as well as communication with the board, communication with the public, and, and Mike is certainly, to this point, I would say is the right person for the job. I'm not sure any of us will receive Christmas cards from Clark University.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
But we certainly...
We're giving them a draft.
We certainly have, have benefited from, from Mike, and will continue to benefit. So it's been, it's been a great step forward. I know the board talked about the need for this position for many years before actually moving forward as part of our staffing plan, but one that we certainly won't regret, or don't regret. It's been a huge step forward for us, so.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Board Member Administrative Issues, non-agenda items, anything from our rank and file, Mr. Davis?
I've got two things, quickly. One is, we've got building projects, we're starting to ramp up on building projects, and we, some of us have been going to the Hempstead Progress Meetings, which, I mean, we've got a basic design, they're working on details. I think everybody's happy with the design. If anybody, you know, is interested in visiting with some of the people at Hempstead, or Kevin Epperaler's team, I'm sure they'd be glad to have, show you what's going on there. But one of the comments I try to make at all of these meetings is, is something that I guess, a comment that comes from some of the clients I deal with in the ag sector, is that the disappointment of poor quality often lasts far longer than the euphoria of low price. And I really think that as we invest in our facilities going forward, they really need to be high-quality. And we've got, there was a time when we didn't have the money to do high-quality things in our buildings, and some of those buildings now, 40 years later, we look at and say, "Boy, that really didn't stand the test of time." So I, I would, I, I believe in high-quality over the short-term goal, short-term cost savings, and there's a lot of, just like building a house, there's the D-grade of dishwasher, and the C-grade, and the B-grade, and the A-grade, and so I, I guess my hope is that we mitigate towards a higher quality. And the second thing I wanted to mention is just, you know, the, one of the stories that doesn't get told often enough in the district is how well the last six years, 10 years have been for the district finances. We're going to come out of this year, we're going to have one of the largest cash reserves we've ever had. We're going to have, we're going to get to our goal of three months' worth of cash reserves. We're in a pretty good space, pretty good place on the unspent balance, and we're in a pretty good spot on the one-cent sales tax. So really, there were years when I was on the board, that it was very sketchy where we were with our financial situation, but we're really in a place where we've got the ability to, you know, we're on solid footing. So, and that comes on top of a almost 10% cut in the property tax rate, rate for the district, and the levy rate for the district. So I think that's a great story that we all need to be aware of, and be prepared to tell people in the community, so.
But they also have to know that that cash, just because it's there...
We have, our, the cash that we have is, we have two really budgets in the school district. We have what we have for cash, and what we're allowed to spend by state law. And the, that's, the challenge that we have, and that we're going to have going forward, is that we have more cash than what we're allowed to spend by state law. We're under a spending limits similar to what pro-football teams and pro-basketball teams are. They have a cap on what they can spend, and that's where our challenge is going to be in future years. But right now, we're, we're in a, in a good spot, a better spot than we've been on both those fronts, cash reserve and our unspent balance we have in a number of years.
Excellent. Thank you.
I guess I would just take this opportunity to remind the board that we're at that great time of year, where kids, staff is, is, new staff members are back today, though existing staff members have been back and working throughout the summer. But you're right up against the start of another school year. There's a lot of excitement in the air. Kids are excited about coming back. Kids are excited about coming back to school. Staff members have been and are excited about coming back to school. So I guess just encourage you or invite you to, as the school year begins, to get out in the schools, stop by, feed on some of the energy and realize why what you do here is so important because there are 10,000, 500, hopefully a few more, kids coming through our doors here in the next week and we're going to have another great year. So just, you know, know that you're always invited to stop in and take a look and see the great things that are happening firsthand.
Thank you, Stan. Preview of upcoming board meeting. Our next meeting is September...
Seven, oh, sorry, September 10th.